...to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the Planning Department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, take the roll, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Ms. Messina?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Jordan, absent. Mr. Canar?
Here.
Ms. Ringler?
Here.
We have six in a forum.
All right. First on the list is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I would move to approve.
I would second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Chris?
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Mr. Fiander, are there any communications to the commission?
Mr. Chair and commissioners, I have one, and I think you received an email today. And I just wanted to highlight a very good opportunity to have some Planning Commissioner training. We don't offer that much here, unfortunately, other than when you start. So, I feel kind of bad from time to time asking you to make really big decisions, and we fall short of training you. So, I'm going to push this one. Planning Commissioner training would be offered at our Kansas American Planning Association Conference, our statewide conference for planners this fall. I think Commissioner Jordan went last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Ringler and Cavazos.
Ringler. So, I am mistaken. But she went two years ago, then. So, they can vouch for it. Thank you. So, we're offering this again this year in lovely sunny Salina on October 20th, which is a Friday. We will pay for you to go in the morning, which there is a Planning Commissioner session being put on by Jim Cowp, who some of you may know, the local land use attorney here in Topeka. He's putting in all -- he's very good. He used to be a Planning Commissioner himself. So, we would -- anyway, I just want to promote it for you as much as you can, and let Chris know if you can go. You can stay the whole day. You don't have to stay just for the morning. But we would love for you to go, and we will cover the cost. That is my one communication, unless there's any questions.
Does anybody have a question? All right. Thank you very much. Now, time for any declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. Seeing none, we will move along to the public hearings. First public hearing is Z1703 by the Topeka Scottish Rite. And our staff presentation. Ms. Driver?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is case 1703. The applicant is the Topeka Scottish Rite. They are requesting a rezoning from M2 Multiple Family Dwelling District to O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional. The property lies at the northwest corner of McVicker Avenue and 30th Street. It's 2,300 southwest 30th Street. It comprises a little over three acres. The building -- the primary building on the site was constructed in 1970 for use by the Scottish Rite organization itself. Since that -- and it's been used by the Scottish Rite since 1970. Since that time, their membership has declined from over 3,000 members to 500, and really they see that the building no longer suits their needs. They have actively been trying to market the building for a year. They're requesting the rezoning. They believe the O&amp;I2 district allows uses that are more consistent with the needs of potential buyers. They've had some interest from cultural, educational, as well as religious users to purchase the building. Just to note that religious uses are allowed in either of these zoning districts. The building, primary building, is a little over 15,000 square feet. The site also contains a 6,000-square-foot poultry barn that's now only used as accessory storage. It's been on the property since the time this was all firm land. The building itself contains a large, open gathering hall without fixed seating, approximately a 284-seat-capacity auditorium, kitchen, and smaller offices. It was zoned initially for multiple-family residential uses in 1968, when there was a proposal to develop retirement townhomes on the property. That never happened, and the building was built by the Scottish Rite in 1970. The neighborhood as a whole is comprised of a mix of educational, which lies to the south of 30th Street. That's Jardine Elementary and Middle School, First Baptist Church just at the southwest corner of McVicker and 30th Street. There's multiple family to the east and west of the subject site. Duplex is north of 30th Street, and then an office, kind of office complex, at the southeast corner of McVicker and 29th Street. It's surrounded by O&amp;I2 zoning to the north and south, the campus institutional uses to the south. The area is designated medium-high-density residential in the Land Use and Growth Management Plan. However, that plan does allow for some mixing of uses that can include office and institutional as a transitional use. Staff believes this is considered a transitional area, since there's office to the north, office and multifamily to the north, and institutional to the south. Some of the uses allowed in O&amp;I2, other than your standard professional office, are nursing homes, private club or lodges, which is sort of what it's currently being used for, cultural facilities such as museums or libraries, government offices, indoor recreation type 1, which would include dance studios, exercise studios, gyms, music academies, martial arts, community centers, outside recreation type 1. The uses allowed in O&amp;I2 are generally compatible with the zoning and uses of the surrounding area. Really, what staff feels is the main detrimental effect on your surrounding properties is the uncertainty of future development on the site due to the large size, it's over three acres, ability to expand in the future, and the fact that there's no known buyer of the site. However, there's also a potential effect if the building remains vacant and is not maintained down the road in the future. Based upon the analysis in the staff report, staff is recommending approval. The applicant is here to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Right. Does anybody have -- any of the commissioners have any questions right now for Ms. Driver? All right. Seeing none, then, I'd like to have the applicant, if they're present. Please state your name for the record and direct any comments directly to the chair. Thank you.
My name is Dale Fritz. I'm the executive director of the Topeka Scottish Rite, therefore representing them in this zoning request. The one thing I would like to add to what Ms. Driver had said, since our public meeting, we have had an offer put on the building. And that offer is from Peaceful Rest Funeral Home.
And that's under the current zoning? Or that would be compatible with just this application or with the?
Yes. It would be compatible with the O&amp;I2, is my understanding. There's no crematorium planned. It's just the chapel.
Right. Other commissioners? Questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. We're ready for public testimony at this time. Anybody that would like to address the commission may do so. You're limited to four minutes per person. Seeing no one at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's now open for our discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Annie. If the concern about the openness of the site and future development on the site, any future additional buildings or extensions or additions, I assume, would be under review by planning, and we'd have an opportunity to give input and restrictions as necessary?
Yes. That would likely be administrated through review by the city, planning, and other city agencies. Either site plan review, and then building permit of course.
Okay.
Go right -- Mr. Armstrong?
Clarification that that intended new owner use does mean what we're rezoning today?
Yes, it does, as long as there's no crematorium, which would require a conditional use permit.
The question that I would have is, given what we've just been told by Mr. Fritz with the use, does that allay staff's concerns regarding the use of the land with it being open-ended at this time, assuming that was at -- that offer was accepted and acted on?
I think so. I mean, the building, of course, they'll have to go through the building permit process. If there's any change of use, they'd have to address what would be required in that respect. But as far as planning, if allowed in the zoning, and they're not making expansions onto the building, our site review probably would be minimal.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
I would move approval of the reclassification of property from M2 Multi-Family Dwelling District to O&amp;I2 Office and Industrial District.
Right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any objections for the conversation? Chris, please take the vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
We're now ready to move on to case number PUD 1704 Aqua Blaster Self-Service Laundry. The applicant or their representative would please approach.
Staff first.
What's that? Excuse me. There I am. Apparently, I'm in a hurry to get ahead of you and get us out of here tonight. My apologies, staff. Mr. Nunabell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, before you is a request to amend the district zoning classification from O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional to PUD Planned Unit Development.
Thank you.
With an O&amp;I2 use group as well as a C1 use group. Applicant property owner is Chamberlain Properties LLC. The 2.4-acre site is located at the northeast corner of southwest Westport Drive and southwest 22nd Terrace. Staff is recommending approval of the PUD master plan, subject to conditions. The subject site consists of currently vacant property. The current zoning is O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional District, which has been in effect since May of 2014, when it was changed from M3 Multiple Family Dwelling District. Regarding the zoning in the surrounding area, the adjacent land to the north is zoned PUD with C4 use group for an office and recreational use. Adjacent lands to the west across Westport Drive are zoned I1 Industrial 1 with a self-storage facility and PUD O&amp;I1 use group for professional office use. The adjacent lands to the south and southeast are zoned PUD M3 use group, multiple family, and include the Pheasant Run and the Woods Residential Condominium Developments. Further to the south is Whispering Pines Residential Apartments, along with single-family neighborhoods. The PUD master plan does provide for internal circulation for vehicles and pedestrians, including a single point of vehicular access on Westport Drive. Could be noted, should be noted, that the initial iteration of the PUD master plan included a second access on the 22nd Terrace, but the applicant removed this second access in response to concerns expressed by nearby residents during the neighborhood information meeting. Due to anticipated relatively minor traffic impacts associated with the self-service laundry, a traffic impact assessment was not required for analysis of the proposed zone change. The master plan does provide for a single building of 12,500 square feet in size. The intended use as a self-service laundry will include glass door entries on all four building facades, with a covered drive and drop-off entry on the east-facing facade. External wall elevations will be brick-clad, and the building will have a pitched roof. The applicant proposes that the laundry facility be a 24-hour operation that will also include an attendant being present at all times. The PUD does also provide for a single monument-style sign adjacent to Westport Drive and located to the north of the building, as well as dimensional requirements for wall signs on the building. PUD provides for substantial landscaping, including required landscape buffers along 22nd Terrace, and a portion of Westport Drive, as well as landscape islands located within the parking lot area and adjacent to the building. The wooded portions of the site to the north and east will remain as undisturbed buffer, including drainage channel. A portion of the Westport Drive frontage includes a landscape buffer less than the standard minimum width of four feet, or is absent altogether. The request for a reduced buffer is for an area approximately 75 linear feet to the south of the access driveway. Affected street frontage, approximately 50 linear feet, is without landscape buffer. The project applicant did hold a neighborhood information meeting on August 29th. Questions and comments from approximately 30 attendees related to drainage, traffic impacts, lighting, crime concerns, signage, building size and design, access, and general Staff did complete analysis as delineated in staff report, including character of the neighborhood, which is a very important aspect in this area, which this site in particular serves as a transition between the residential areas and the heavier commercial areas to the north. The proposed PUD master plan can be found to provide for development of a vacant property with uses that, although commercial, do provide, does provide through development standards, a discernible transition between the residential area to the south and the commercial uses to the north. The requested variance, eliminating or reducing the landscape buffer, however, along Westport Drive, is not seemingly compatible with the character of the residential development to the south or the office use to the west. In addition, there are architectural design elements of the proposed building that do need, that need be enhanced to further adhere to the character of the nearby residential area. Staff is also recommending the limiting of hours of operation to 16 continuous hours as an additional measure in protecting nearby residential areas from the potentially negative impacts of round-the-clock use. The applicant did also provide specific information regarding adhering to the golden factors of analysis for any zone change, and this letter is attached to the staff report. Based upon the findings, or based upon findings and analysis within the staff report, planning staff is again recommending approval of the PUD master plan, subject to conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Well done, despite the fact I tried to skip it. Staff, do you have questions for -- or, excuse me, commissioners, we have questions for Mr. Nunabell?
One of the staff recommendations, the condition number five, it says limit the open hours to 18 hours, but elsewhere, and I think you mentioned 16?
I'm sorry. Yes, that is an error. It is 16 hours. Yes, thank you.
And then, my second question is, with that and some of the other conditions, like the monitoring by the applicant, that there will be a staff person there during open hours, what is the enforcement later of those conditions? If the community determines later that those conditions are not being upheld, what kind of recourse does, what happens?
You know, with the PUD being in effect with these conditions, it does act as a zoning requirement, and as such, enforcement efforts in terms of a zoning violation could be attended to.
Any other questions, commissioners? Mr. Armstrong?
Just clarification again on the condition number one about reorienting or locating the building that has to provide the buffer along the Westport side that currently you said was less than four feet, and we're going to require that to be a minimum of 10? Is that?
Yes, Commissioner Armstrong, that's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
Can you describe for me what the limitations are in terms of the drainage and utility easements are concerned, in terms of what can or cannot be placed within that?
They do need to adhere to that easement area. There is a setback there. I should also have noted in my report that there is a drainage plan currently under review, but it's presumably will be approved soon. But yes, they will have to -- that is a constraint on the site, that drainage easement where the wooded area is located now.
So, no paving, no?
That's correct.
No anything?
It needs to be left undisturbed.
If I can, Commissioner Hall, if I can add to that as well, that doesn't mean that drainage easement could not be altered through a plating process. It just hasn't. The way it is right now, Mr. Nunabell is correct. You really can't encroach into that with any improvements. You'd have to -- but that's not to say it could not be altered through a plating process.
For the questions, commissioners? All right. Then, at this time, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Greg Ferris. I represent the owners and the applicant in this case. They correctly identified many of the things in the PUD, and I apologize. In my letter, there was a typo, initial letter. The current zoning is O&amp;I2, not O&amp;I1. PUD restricts all the uses to that which is allowed today, which is the O&amp;I2 plus the self-service laundry. Nothing else is allowed. Those are the only things that are allowed. We have removed, as John stated, the driveway, which was going to be on southwest terrace at the request of the neighbors, and we complied with that request. This PUD has significant architectural restrictions already. We're using brick with a gable roof, and so that is significantly more than is currently required. We also have a very large landscaping buffer, all except for a very small part of that along Westport. The signage is in compliance with the zoning, and the only variance that we're requesting is the landscaping. We think the PUD creates a transitional buffer between the commercial development. As you can see, there is actually industrial zoning. There is significant commercial zoning. The PUD that is just to the north of us actually is an indoor recreation facility that went through a process to be allowed, and so it is even more intensive use than we have. So, we are clearly going to a, going as a transitional area. The PUDs to the south, they're not single-family. They are multi-family uses. So, what we're offering, we believe, is a correct transitional zone to that. Staff has made several recommendations, nine, I believe. We concur with number 2, 4, 6, 8, and 9. We have no problem with the changing the language. In fact, I think we have submitted, John, I hope you got that today. If not, you'll get it tomorrow. One of the things that came up frequently in our neighborhood meeting was lighting, and we have included the language that staff has asked for in regard to the lighting. We also will shield the mechanical. We also will make sure that the area to the north is landscaped with turf, and the number nine is more of a technical issue, and we don't have any problem with that. We do have a bit of an issue, though, with some of the recommendations, particularly 1 and 7. The drainage way to the east side of the property makes it really impossible for us to configure it. We have already, let's see, does this actually, yeah. You can see right here, we've actually had to lop off part of the parking lot so that we don't encroach into that. We have no intention of replating this, and in fact, when we met with engineering, they were very, pretty explicit that they didn't want us to do anything into that drainage area, and we would agree that that probably makes sense for this area. So, because of that, and because of the loss of the driveway, we really need to have the ability to do a complete circle around the building. It's just natural that you have to do that. So, we think that it would be really difficult to configure that site. And one of the things I want you to understand here is that, you see right here, we have a very large island that we have placed there, which will be heavily landscaped, and that is immediately adjacent to the area that we're asking the variance on. Now, interestingly enough, this is the property that is immediately north. You can see they have that four-foot strip, and they have this nice little four-foot strip of grass, which really isn't really much, where what we're going to do, and somehow I know that language didn't come through on this, is we're going to have 10,000 square feet of landscaping. If we complied with the city regulations, we would have 2,500 square feet of landscaping. So, in return for giving up this little bit of landscaping and adding this, we are giving you a very large landscaping buffer here and also to the north. We think that that's a very fair trade-off for the variance of that four-foot strip that you saw on that other piece. Really didn't amount to any landscaping at all. It was just grass. So, we think that this really has an impact on the neighborhood in a positive way, because we're not just planting grass. Like, if you go up Westport, everybody has grass and maybe a couple bushes. We have bushes along here that is the entire length. We have bushes all along the parking lot to the south, and then we have several large trees that we're also planting. And we're also planting trees up here. So, we think that because of that, that has a large impact on the area and makes us in compliance with the character of that area. In fact, we probably will be a little out of character, because we're going to have so much landscaping compared to everything else that is just grass, that we will really be very much that way. The other recommend, and so those are recommendations on the berm to the south, which we don't agree is necessary, because we're planting so many trees. We have widened that from 10 feet to 20 to 25 feet in places. So, we believe that the berm is totally unnecessary. It really accomplishes nothing other than making us mow extra. And the reconfigure of the building, which you saw from the layout, is very, almost impossible for us to do. The other recommendations that we have an issue with are recommendation number three. I think it's important to say that, you know, we don't consider zoning going for I think it's important to say that, you know, we don't consider zoning going from a vacant lot to the laundromat. We're going from O-N-I-2, so what's allowed in O-N-I-2 is really what you should consider when you look at what's allowed in the character of the neighborhood. And what would be allowed today would be a funeral home, and I think she went through some of these, indoor recreation, including fitness clubs. Now, fitness clubs, I represent a large fitness club in the state of Kansas, they operate 24 hours a day, and they have significant amounts of traffic that would be allowed here today. They would not have to go through a zoning process, all they would have to do is make sure they meant the setbacks, that they had adequate parking and those things, and that would be allowed today. Medical offices, including pharmacy, and again, those could be operated 24 hours a day. A funeral home, they never close. So to require us to close, we think is very, would be very onerous on us, because that's not our business plan. And the fact that we have included in our PUD that we will have somebody on site 24 hours a day to manage and make sure that there are no issues. We also think that that restriction of hours is very discriminatory against anybody who works second or third shift. You know, they would like to be able, they may live in those apartments, they would like to come in and do their laundry when they got off work, instead of having to wait until morning or trying to get it done when those things work. So we find that there's no reason to limit the hours, because O-N-I-2 doesn't restrict the hours of operation, that's the way it currently is. And many of these uses are really more intensive than even what we're planning, so we think that that's just a little asking too much for us, from us. A radio and TV broadcasting studio, my nephew's in that business, they operate all night. Again, that's allowed today. So we think that that's an issue that should not be included in the recommendations. The second one is the building itself. Now, we are, again, as I said, we're using brick, we have a gabled roof, and none of that is included, and significant glass windows, which were asked by staff for us to add, none of that is required in the O-N-I-2 district. So if somebody wanted to build a recreation center there, or if they wanted to build a fitness club there, which they could do today, they could build a metal building, that's allowed under the current zoning code. So they could put up a metal building, they wouldn't have to have a gabled roof, and in fact, they could have a 20,000-square-foot building, because that lot is big enough to handle that, and that's the minimum or the maximum in O-N-I-2. Instead, we're proposing a 12,500-square-foot building, which is significantly smaller than what is currently allowed, a one-story building, brick and a gabled roof, and we're going to invest $1.8 million into the community, that will generate over $70,000 a year in taxes. So we believe that what we're doing certainly complies with what O-N-I-2 allows today, and in fact, we've gone well beyond that. So we believe that that's the way it should be. I think your staff report adequately goes through the golden rules, but since this is a public hearing, and this is the only public hearing, I'd just like to go through how we comply with this golden rule. We believe the zoning character of the neighborhood, I think I showed that in the transitionary form, and that in what we are doing is really, we're restricting ourselves more than O-N-I-2 restricts, except for the use of the laundromat. Laundromat is a, it's for the neighborhood, it's for that area, yes, we may have some customers coming from other places, but that's not how they will make their money, it's because of the things in the area. So we believe it is certainly, because the area's a mix of industrial, commercial, and office, and high-density, multifamily, we believe it complies with that. The extent to which the removal restriction will detrimentally affect nearby property. I think it's very interesting that the golden rules don't require us to show how we will help the neighboring property, only that we're not detrimental. And again, if you look at what's allowed in O-N-I-2, what we're proposing will not have a detrimental impact, especially once we've taken out the driveway. Again, remember, if we were doing an O-N-I-2 zoning, and we were doing a fitness center, we could leave that driveway in, so we have gone beyond that. So we believe that there's nothing that we're doing is detrimental to the area. The property has been vacant for nearly 40 years, I believe that we certainly can see how that complies with the golden rules. The relative gain to public safety, welfare, compared to the loss of value and hardship imposed on the applicant, this property's been vacant for a very long time, it has been unable to be developed as currently zoned, there's enormous hardship on the owner, and we think that there's nothing that we're doing has a negative impact. And in fact, by having somebody there 24 hours a day, increasing that security in that area, we believe is a benefit to the public, health, safety, and welfare. Finally, I think your staff adequately outlined how it complies with the comprehensive plan and the impact on proposed, the pro development on community facilities. There's adequate water, sewer in that area, we are required to handle the drainage in the way that the city code requires that, so that's not an issue. The traffic that we will generate is off-peak traffic, because most of the business is on a Sunday, or it will be in the evening, or in the early morning, which is not the time that this area has a lot of traffic for schools and those kind of things. So in fact, we will actually be, it will be beneficial in that regard. So I believe that, based on that, we would ask you to approve the planned unit development, we would ask you to approve that with the one, the recommendations that staff has included, except for the four conditions, we think that those are really onerous and are unnecessary because they go beyond, well beyond, what is currently allowed today in O-N-I-2. With that, I thank you for your time, we're glad to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Ferris. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, I'll stand by.
Mr. Hoff?
Question, two questions. One, I noticed that the entrance drive is set up to be split, so you can go to the north, what's the planning for the open area that's to your north?
There is no plan for that now, it's about the only thing that could go in, there would be a small office in the future. If they wanted to do that, the way that your staff has written the condition, we'd have to go through the PUD process to allow that use, even though it's in O-N-I-2, I believe, that's how you've written it, and so we don't have a problem with that, we've included that as one of the recommendations that we would comply with. So if we were going to develop that as a small office, we'd have to come back and amend the PUD.
Second question, you have two entrances to the building, I noticed one from the west, one from the south. I also noticed that the dimensions of the building are such that it's in the east-west, or, I'm sorry, the north-south dimension, it's about roughly 20 feet smaller than it is going the other direction. My question to you is, have any consideration been given based upon the 10-foot setback criteria, the landscaping criteria, on the west side of Orion and that building, turning at 90 degrees and facing, so you have the skinny dimension running north-south?
It's a good, very good question, because I've asked that question two or three times, so I actually have an answer. The way that these buildings are configured is, the long walls are the walls of the dryers and washers, they do have some on the other walls, but those are the areas where you have the restrooms and those kind of things. So if you reconfigure that, it really messes with the openings as people come in, because you now have the long walls as the major openings, where you need to have those long banks of washers and dryers. And if you're looking at the interior plan, you will see that they have to have the extra space behind those to be able to service those things and that. So it makes it very difficult to operate the facility that way, and for the gain that you're going to get, we need the setbacks, those aren't the issue, the only issue is that landscaping. So we're well beyond the setback requirements of the plat and of this area and of the zoning code, but we don't need that one, there's about 50 feet that does not have landscaping, and that corresponds with that one island, and then there's another 20 feet where it's not quite the four-foot landscaping. So is it impossible? I'm not going to tell you it's impossible, does it really hinder the ability for them to do and have the number of machines that they need to have and those things? Yes, it's very difficult, and we don't believe the trade-off of a small landscaping, especially when you look at what's really in the area, is only a four-foot grass strip everywhere. What we're doing is so much more than that, that we don't believe that that warrants it, but obviously, that's up to you.
Looking at your plan, it looks like on the north, because it stands now on the north side and on the east side, and a little bit on the south is where your mechanical backup spaces are. Even if you turn, if you rotated that, you would still have over half the south elevation without that, without any of that back space involved, and it looks like you have an area where you could have more glass next to your entryway and meet that criteria, so I just wonder if a lot of consideration was really given to that.
We have been through that several times with the architects, they have said it's very difficult, it makes it very hard for them to do that, they have three other facilities, and that's the way that they are elongated, and it's because of the way that they like to have their equipment, to where they can easily maintain it and keep it together for the most part.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I'll stand by if you have questions in the future, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Yes, please.
Mr. Nunabell, can you restate your reason for changing the hours to 16 consecutive hours from 24?
It has to do, Commissioner, with the thought, again, of the nearby residential units just on the other side of 22nd Terrace, and the fact that it's a 24-hour operation, we thought that by having some closure at nighttime, essentially, the core nighttime hours, that that would be more in line with that nearby residential.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to open it now for public testimony. Yes, Mr. Fincher.
Would it be helpful to the commission if we, if staff could address the conditions that they were not agreeable to in terms of the thought or thinking behind those, or is that, or would you rather?
Just head nods, folks, would you rather have that now or after the public testimony?
I'd say now.
Now.
Go right ahead.
Thank, oh, thank you, I think Commissioner Messina kind of hit on one of them, which was the hours, that was condition number five, I think. Again, our, not to tread the ground that Mr. Nunabell went over, but, yeah, I guess we look at this as a commercial use, it is a commercial use, and we're in an area that is transitioning into residential through an office zoning, which you have across the street. So any 24-hour operation just does not fit the character of what is a transitional area. Certainly, I suppose, from a use standpoint, you could argue that residential's 24 hours as well, but we know it's, again, this is a commercial use, not in a commercial district, surrounded by other commercial uses, we did feel that was out of character. And I don't think the people that bought condos and moved into the area knowing that that was going to be an office use would expect a commercial operation open when they get home after 10 o'clock at night. So that was that. The first condition, condition number one, just want to clarify, so you heard some, this is the one that talks about having the 10-foot landscape buffer, there was some mention in the staff report and on the presentation about a variance to the four-foot requirement. So that's under standard zoning, so if it was left to be O-N-I-2, yes, there's a four-foot requirement. This is a PUD, and the PUD is open, there's no variance here for landscape setback, it is to reflect what the character is around here, and so across the street, the office, setback is, I believe, 16 to 22 feet. Certainly, the setback on the residential side across 22nd Terrace is in keeping with this 10-foot requirement that we are asking for, for the PUD. So there's no variance, I just want to, it's kind of technical, but we, in a PUD, we require whatever is in keeping with the character, and it's not, there's not a four-foot minimum for PUDs. So there's no variance. There is, they are asking for a variance, but it's not from a four-foot, it's from whatever our recommendation was, in this case, it's 10 feet. The condition number three, revising architectural elevations, do you want to address that one?
I can address that. The condition's somewhat self-explanatory. When you look at a office building that's half the size, an unbroken roofline is, it's fine. You get a bigger building and it starts to, you have a larger gable, you have a longer ridge line, it potentially looks more like a barn. And I don't mean to sound extreme by saying that, I just don't know how else to describe it, it just doesn't look as much like a small-scale, human-scaled office building, it just looks like something bigger, and that's the purpose of that condition, is to address that.
And the last condition, I think condition number seven was the last one, about the 30-inch berm along 22nd Terrace, and we added the berm in response to, again, keeping with the character of the area, parking lots that are not necessarily conducive to residential area, again, wanting to hide that and screen that as much as possible. We don't think the landscaping will do that in of itself, which is why we requested the berm, which is pretty standard when there is a large parking area. We want to get it high enough so that landscaping screens it and buffers it from an incompatible use such as residential or on an image street. So those are, that's some of the background we just want to provide, and again, I think all in all, we're introducing a commercial use into the area, how can we make that work and keep, and make it in keeping and compatible with what's around there, make it a transition, that's what these conditions, is what all the recommendations kind of go towards.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Armstrong?
For the non-architects, or the engineers on the commission, could you give me a little more clarity on number three, in what the gabled roof dormers or hip roof elements, what are those trying to achieve beyond the, I assume this is along the north and south elevation shown on A4?
So there, oh, sorry, Commissioner Armstrong, I'll have Mr. Hall go over this a little bit more, but if you, in your packet, are you looking at the elevations right now, it's on the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, A4. I believe the west, correct me if I'm wrong, the west, which is, the west elevation is the one facing Westport, that is the one that we are trying to address, it is a, the roof, the gabled roof is blank, it's, in fact, it's rather large, and I think that's what staff conditions were trying to address. And Mr. Hall, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think if this was a building that was about, say, I don't know, half the size, half the length of exterior wall, that gable would be, certainly would be appropriate. When you get to be a large, when it gets to be a large building, it starts to look more like a, like I said, just a large building with one gable on one end, it affects the character of the building quite a lot. And the same goes for the, so if you added a, if you used a hip roof, it wouldn't have that open gable, it would be sloped back. I don't know how to explain it very well, but in other words, the gable end, the area above the, you know, the 12 feet above the door, above that would not be on the same wall. wall plane. It would be a roof, and it would slope back. That'd be a hip element.
We're trying to break it up.
And, and the ridge line on the north and south building elevation, you have a single ridge line that is about 100, I think it's 120, 130 feet long. That's just quite long for a single ridge line.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners right now? All right. Thank you, staff. We'll now open the floor for public testimony. Please limit your comments to the director and to the chair. And anybody who does choose to address staff, please make sure that you have signed it back so that we can have your name for the minutes for next week.
Everybody says I don't talk loud enough, so. Okay, my name's Esther Lane, and I'm with the Pheasant Run HOA Board, and I'm a member of the board. And what I'm passing out to you are photos of problems that have occurred that we see with traffic, and I understand that traffic was not addressed as far as having it checked out. And so anyway, the very first picture shows a location where the laundromat is to be placed. The second one is showing, the second article on there is showing where Pheasant Run exits. There's two exits on there showing where we can come out of Pheasant Run, which consists of 100 and some homeowners. We're not renters, and we have our own laundry facilities and so on, as well as there are other homeowners in condos behind us there, and I don't know how many are in there. But on that same one, I show a view where you can see the traffic. There's a little red box that shows where you can actually see the cars coming around that corner. There's a big curve right there, which makes it very difficult to see to pull out of the driveways. And the hot, the bus stops where the blue mark is on that map, is where the buses stop for the high school, middle school, and grade school, and unload and load children several times a day. Okay? And the second photo down there shows, I've circled the car where you can see it coming around the fence, and you see right there's the driveway and where the bus parks, and you just barely see the nose of that car when it comes around the corner. So you can't see to pull out of that driveway, and which is the 22nd Park dark driveway, which is right in front of the condos there. The second picture, third picture there is showing the nose of one of the cars coming out of that parking driveway. And then it also shows a car that's coming around that corner, and I was parked in the parking lot across the street, the driver, the doctor's office parking lot. So you could see that car that you see coming around the corner there is actually, you can't see it from that driveway. It's as if that front picture, that very first picture there where it shows one, the very nose of that car coming out, that car is sitting clear back there. It's sitting right straight across from the parking lot. If you look at here, there's the parking lot and then the car coming around the corner. Then the next picture is showing, looking from 22nd Terrace, and you see there's a hill there, and you can see the first car coming, but you see the very top of the next car. So that's right in front of Park Place, and you can't see the next car coming, right where that bus would have been setting. Okay? The last picture is showing facing 21st Street, and you can see the traffic on that street. You can't pull off of 21st Street into Westport. There's no stop signs, there's no stoplights, there's nothing. Oh, there's stop signs, sorry. There's no stoplights, nothing to stop the traffic going from down 21st Street that lets you pull out or pull in. And there's been accidents at that corner, and there's been accidents at the corner of Park Place, which shows you can't see cars coming. There's even been a death, and I understand that there has been more since I, before I got there, but I've only know of one since I've been living there. And so I wanted to address that, and I think that before anything is done, I think it needs to be assessed as far as having somebody look at it other than just ignoring that part of it. Next is the value. We checked with real estate to find out whether our value would be better or worse, and they're indicating that, that the perception of a laundromat being there would reduce the value of the people buying, but that it, they cannot definitely decide how much it would reduce it. So that's the only thing I have on that. And the security, when he was saying that it would be secure, the security can only handle the security of the people that are on their property when they leave their property, or if they have children with them, or if they have young adults that are bored, you know, where do they go? Walking or whatever. But we, we are a nice community, and we prefer having a doctor's office or something like that there. I think that they'll do a nice job building this building, but we are concerned about it, very seriously concerned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Do you have a question?
Just a moment before you go. Commissioners, does anybody have a question for Ms. Lane?
Could you please give us your address?
5839 Southwest 22nd Terrace, number two, condo number two. Lights coming in the bedroom windows and things like that bother people too.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Do you, in just your opinion, do you believe that this traffic is always like this or worse because of the construction on Wannamaker?
Well, in the mornings, going to work, it's pretty bad because people that live in that area have no way over to Wannamaker. You know, they have, they're one-way streets, there's cul-de-sacs, there's things like that that come out on Westport. So the traffic does get pretty heavy in the mornings and in the evenings, and then it really gets bothersome about the buses because they can't see them coming around the corner, you know, you know, flashing light or something, you know, whatever. I don't know what the city can do, but it's, needs to be addressed, and that's just going to bring the traffic in that area even higher.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Because this, this site could also support doctor's offices, dental offices, this sort of thing that start at 7:30 or 7:00 in the morning, and they go all day till 4:30. From my experience raising three kids and doing all that kind of work, I can't imagine that the part, the traffic would be any less with a dental, doctor's office or any other kind of business than what's being proposed here.
Yeah. What I was understanding, that he was believing that, our meeting, that majority of the people that would be using would be in the, after-work hours, you know, maybe some would do it in the mornings, but it'd be after-work hours. And that's where the people are going home, and the buses are dropping the kids off, and you know, you know, and they may be dropping them off a little earlier, but you know, people coming home from work 4:35, and if they're dropping off there after work, you know, that's people coming, they were saying they were addressing people from, like, over by the high school, apartment buildings over by the high school and things like that, which are, you know, not really the same grade of homes that we have. So we were concerned about that. But there is traffic all day, but I don't know whether it's any worse because of that. It might be somewhat because of there is traffic, work being going on on Wannamaker, but I do know that a lot of people go down that street in the mornings and at night, and it's hard, very hard to get across 21st Street. There's no stop. And you try to pull across 21st Street, there's cars coming out off the interstate right there and going down the interstate right there, and so there's just, there's three lanes to block across there and go into the other lanes coming the other direction. It's just hard to do.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Lane.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was remiss. We did, while she was speaking, we do have a petition. I'll pass this around as well. We don't have copies. It was just handed to us tonight. So this is from the Pheasant Run homeowners as well, from Miss Rosalie Cooper. So I'm going to pass this around, just so you know, and enter it on the record.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Feiner. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission? Now, would ask that you do, please include your addresses.
I'm Joy Barnes. I live at 5851 Southwest 22nd Terrace, apartment two, in Pheasant Run. Originally, I was with most of the residents, and I didn't approve of the laundromat, but they've done everything we've asked. They've put that big buffer along that south side. And actually, any parking lot lights are supposed to be facing down, they're not going to hurt any of our condos. That is the living room, dining room, kitchen side. The inside, our bedrooms are actually on the inside of the complex, and we have all kinds of lights on the building's inside. So if you're sleeping on your couch, that's your problem, you know, but you're, it's not going to hurt lighting. I really, I don't care about the 24-hour a night. That's up to them. I think the way they told us about it, they would not allow the homeless, the vagrants, the bums to lay around and sleep. They wouldn't let the kids come in and mess around and just hang out. Yeah, we get some in our neighborhood now. They drive through, go through the garbage cans. They go through that regularly and take stuff out of that, and we have to pick up what they don't put in, put back. We've had cars broken into, but every neighborhood in the city has had that. So I don't see that there's a problem there. I, I'm for this, actually. I wasn't at first, but I think I am more now. I would rather have this than a fitness center. Thank you.
All right. Just a moment, Ms. Burns. Does anybody have any questions before she goes? Okay. Thank you very much. It's me.
My name is Ruth Fudell. I live at 5719 Southwest 22nd Terrace in the woods. And when she was talking about the lights not bothering anybody in Pheasant Run, there are people in the woods who are going to be bothered by people's lights and, you know, they're, our first building, as you come down 22nd Terrace, is right there off of, you know, right on the hill. And I think that, I think that our, one of our biggest concerns is the hours, because she's talking that it wouldn't make any difference. I think that we're going to, we all own our own homes there, and so we have our own washers and dryers. We don't need a laundromat, and so this is going to bring people from another part of town. And we're concerned about the people. They said at the meeting, that we, the neighborhood meeting, that Sunday was their biggest day. You know, and so sometimes it's nice to have it quiet on Sunday. But I think that a real concern is that if you go to a laundromat and you throw your clothes in and you've got, what, 40 minutes? What are you going to do? How many of those people are going to wander out and wander around 22nd Terrace? They don't have anywhere else to go but our, but around our condo complexes. And so I really feel that the 24-hour a day is, is not good for the residential area that, that it's being put in.
Just a moment. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? All right. Then with that, I will close the public hearing and open it to discussion among the commissioners, questions for staff and each other.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
I'll just address a traffic question a little bit. I am involved with the 21st and Wannamaker project. There is considerable detour traffic on Westport right now. That definitely will go back to a little calmer level after the 21st and Wannamaker intersection is, is open. There are issues at 21st and Westport. It is a stop-controlled intersection. It is hard to, in peak hours, to get across if you're trying to make a northbound left turn on a 21st Street. But I don't, I don't see this adversely affecting that condition very much.
I would actually second those comments, having driven through there for 15 years, coming home from work, and, and currently on a weekly, if not daily, basis, I don't think this facility is going to substantially impact any, any traffic there. You know, I'm, I'm not an expert on it, but I am familiar with the, with the intersection, and that those problems are pretty much embedded in, in this facility vis a vis anything else that would go in there is probably not, not truly relevant. Other conversation?
Mr. Chair, if I may, ask a question for the staff. I'm not sure who to address this to, so I'm going to address this to Mr. Feiner, but are there any plans for road improvements, traffic calming measures for the 29th Terrace or 22nd, excuse me?
Commissioner Messina, no, there are not any, and there, we don't anticipate having any.
Okay. And then also, I had another question for, just to know the answer, really. If you did change it from 24 hours to 16 hours, the lights would still be on all night, correct? Or would?
There is a condition in the PUD, actually, it's in the staff report recommending that light did not leave the property. So it does not address, that no does not address keeping lights on or anything like that.
Okay.
Certainly outside, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Folks, we have, we have objections from the applicant with regard to four of the conditions that staff has, has put on here. And given previous commentary we've had from the city council, it might be good if we make sure we've addressed all of those. Number one, with regard to relocating or reorienting the business. Mr. Hall, your?
Comments, yeah. Frankly, I don't think they did enough study of the site before they started to, and didn't realize that, that a 10-foot setback was required. And I don't think, and I think there's room in that plan to make adjustments either in orientation or in, by stepping setbacks on the west side, which might help the roof lines as well. But I think, I think there's more work that could be done there. I think there's room to the north to stretch the building out a little bit if necessary to make up for the difference in setbacks. So I don't think that's a valid point, and I think, number one, if it's corrected, can also take care of the architectural elevations, would improve that by breaking the roof up.
So you're, you're addressing comment number three on that as well?
One and three.
If it stayed the way, oriented the way that it is, are you seeing number three as necessary or unnecessary?
I'd say one and three are both necessary for my approval of this, of this project.
I understand. Commissioners, other comments or discussion on those items? Yes, Mr. Armstrong?
Talk us again, and maybe staff, through the process of, I mean, approving staff recommendations that may not be something that they would move forward with. We would approve this, and it would be up to the applicant to adhere to those or start over or make changes? over, or make changes?
Yes, Commissioner, we'd be proceeding on to council with these conditions. And, some of them are adding notes, some of them are reconfiguring, but the expectation would be, prior to going to council, that these would be enacted. So, the PUD would be amended, revised.
For clarification, Ms. Feeney, in particular, if I'm, if I'm correct, we can pass this subject to any and/or all?
That's correct.
Of, of the conditions that are, are put in?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I would ask, I don't have the architectural and engineering experience of some of the other people on, on, on the commission. What I do do is run around to gymnasiums all over the town and all over the state. Would, under the current zoning, somebody be able to put in a gymnasium and operate it there?
I don't think that. Yes, they would be able to put in a fitness center, subject to, again, fitting the building.
I, I understand fitting the building, but with a, and, and I looked at the size, and it's, it's not, frankly, it's a little smaller than a lot of gymnasiums. And, the reason I'm making the comment is that, when I look at the design, it looks an awful lot like a lot of gymnasiums that I walk into. It was described as barn-like, it also looks gymnasium-like. And, so, from a layperson's point of view, on the, on the 130-foot roof line, I don't disagree with the characterization. I just don't think it's dissimilar from what might be allowed under the current zoning. And, I understand it's a PUD, and that they're asking for more. I just simply bring that to people's attention when they're, when they're considering recommendation number three. And, from my point of view, with regard to number one, I have to defer to Mr. Haw's expertise on, on that matter. Other commissioners, comments on one or three since the, kind of been opened up?
I agree with Mr. Haw on one and three. But, I think there's some discussion on some other ones, maybe.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong, I saw you indicating.
I guess, number three, I don't, I would fight as hard for that one. I think just across 21st Street, north of Sonic, there's a gym facility going in there that, I think it's pretty much a concrete block, big giant square tornado shelter-looking thing. This architecturally seems to be better than where that thing's going. But, I, I understand that this is more transitional and adjacent to the homes as well, so.
All right, then, moving on to condition number five, with the hours of operation. What comments, discussion do we want to have before we try and craft a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I am not opposed to the 24-hours.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
I don't see that's a problem, maybe, either.
I concur, I'm pretty sure the storage facility that's just down the street is, is So, I know it's further away, but...
I can't imagine that the usage is even gonna warrant the staff to be there for that extra time, and I guess that would play out over, over time.
All right, that brings us to number seven, the 30-foot berm.
Inch.
Thirty-inch, excuse me, inch.
I, I also read that as feet.
Yes, I, I, apparently, I need my bifocals, I'm only seeing one.
It seems instructive, but...
I was trying to figure out how we were going to put 30 feet there, because that was, it didn't look large enough for that, so. People's comments on that.
I don't, I don't think that's a hard thing to achieve, and it probably doesn't cost very much money, so.
I agree.
I tend to concur with that, leaving just number nine.
Have they agreed on that?
They agree, they agree with that.
Oops, my mistake. All right. Does anybody have any further comments or questions for staff they would like to address?
Can you tell us, sorry, Mr. Chair, can you tell us again why you wanted the limitations on the hours? Please.
Commissioner Cavazos, this, you're picking on the one that was probably the most difficult to get a feel for. Again, we based our decision on the fact that, first of all, a 24-hour facility in a transitional slash, going into a neighborhood, is not something that is typical. If it's in a, in a area where there's all, if it's on Wanamaker, if it's on, off Wanamaker, and there's other commercial buildings around, that, that certainly is more of a commercial character type of thing. And, and, and we just fell back on the idea that if, if we were residents of the neighborhood that had bought our homes, or, and we knew, and we knew ahead of time what to expect here, we probably wouldn't expect that, and that's just something in a transitional area, you wouldn't expect. So, I, I'm, and then doing a little research to make sure that the, the use, other laundry services are not, are not all like that, and that's, that is true. There are some that are, actually, most of them are not 24-hours. So, that's, that's where we came from.
Another commissioner, you guys are, you all are fine with the 24-hours? Is that my understanding? I just think of the gym, when you go, the 24-hour fitness gym, everybody has a code, there just seems to be some safety issues. Would be my reasoning as well, living in the neighborhood, I would know that if they're at a gym facility that has a passcode or a key, that they would, you know, feel safer going in than having people just kind of hanging out at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, doing their laundry, maybe? So, that was one of my concerns, is from a neighborhood standpoint, is how I would feel, you know, driving, not, I don't think I'd be out at 2:00 in the morning, but if I was, you know, wondering why, you know, the people that are in there, just doing their laundry, I guess, so. So, I'd like to hear more discussion on that. I mean, I know you said the, there's a storage facility, was one thing that someone pointed out. Is there any other reason?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I do believe that it being staffed 24/7 would definitely take away, and I don't think they're gonna allow people to just be like wandering around in the parking lot and maybe causing mischief, so. I, I just don't see it as a reason to not have it for 24-hours, 'cause, I mean, like the gentleman applicant said, is that people get off different shifts, and if they have to wait until it opens up again in the morning, it could be very inconvenient. So, if we don't have a lot in the area that are 24-hours, then this could potentially help more people out.
I would tend to agree. I used to actually, based on jobs that I had, have to do a lot of late-night laundry. I've sat in laundromats back long before there were the number of easy entertainment options electronically available to us today. And, I don't ever recall an instance where there was any users of the facility that were an issue, and the, and the 24-hour person on, you know, in attendance, I think adequately addresses the vagrancy issue of non-users. And, I guess unless somebody's got more, that they would like to go ahead with, with obviously as much discussion as we need, but otherwise, I would entertain a motion at this time, and I haven't heard a whole lot of disapproval in the entirety. So, please be specific if there are any of the staff recommendations that you would not be including, and in what manner?
I can, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion. I would recommend, based on the findings and the analysis in the staff report, that I move that Topeka Plan Commission Ford to the governing body, a recommendation of approval of the proposed PUD master plan, along with the following conditions. Conditions 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
And I would second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion before we have a vote? Personally note, I would have left out number three, however. That's probably not going to change my vote on the motion, so, Chris, please call the rule.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
May I ask you something? I just wanna say, I do this all through the Midwest. You guys really are very good planning commissioners. I was impressed with your comments, your deliberation, your knowledge, and you should be very proud of your staff, they've been very good to work with. It's my first experience in Topeka, would like to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Guess you don't need any training, though.
Having done a little training last year, I, I think it would still be very useful.
Always. Yeah.
Mr. Gales would still be talking about dormers, though.
I think so.
Does that have power, diet drive?
We still have Tennessee Town to talk about. Excuse me.
So, I'm sure he's watching on TV, though.
Nothing else better to do.
Hey, Scott.
All right, we're moving along to our discussion items. Before we move on to them, do you have anything, Mr. Feinder?
I keep forgetting things, but now that the audience has cleared a little, I remembered. Another communication I have is next month, you will have your full complimentary of commissioners here. We have two of our pending commissioners in, in audience. I think tomorrow night is your big night, right? So, they're, they're taking notes, so this is, so I just wanted to let you know, help is on the way. You'll have a full body here next, next month, so we wish you the best tomorrow night, and I'm sure you'll see him here next month, so.
Sure I can speak.
Who are these people?
Who are they? We have tomorrow night, being nominated for the planning commission chairs is Matt Warner and Mark Freed. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Matt and Mark. And, Matt is ostensibly taking the role of Mr. Gales, as Matt is a local architect, so you get to, to rib him a little now about the dormers and the, and all that stuff, so.
And, that ribbing is entirely called for. Gentlemen, sure I can speak on behalf, all the commissioners will be delighted to have you. Welcome aboard.
Are we potentially on track to revisit last month's issue next month?
Mr. Armstrong, we are. The Lake Shawnee Storage PUD, they have resubmitted. We are going out to a neighborhood meeting, I believe, next week or two. And, it is not exactly as you left it, meaning they, they did not meet everything that they, they did not meet all the conditions. So, it's, yes, it's coming, it's coming so far.
All right. Then, let's move on to discussion item one, Tennessee Town.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tim Esparza. I am the neighborhood planner for the city of Topeka. Today, I'm here to talk about the 2017 Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan update. So, beginning in late March, the planning process for this update began with a kickoff meeting open to the public. At this meeting, we outlined the current conditions of the neighborhood, and we did a brainstorming activity where we identified the issues and long-term goals of the neighborhood. Following this, between April and August, we met five times with the Plan Review Committee to get feedback on various topics of the neighborhood plan. The Plan Review Committee consisted of nine members who volunteered their time following the kickoff meeting. Okay, so, this is a general layout of the neighborhood. The area comprises 89 acres of land. It is located one mile southwest of downtown Topeka, and it is bounded by southwest Washburn to the west, southwest Clay to the north, southwest Munson to the east, and southwest Hantoon to the south. So, there are a total of 224 total acres in the area of this, the majority are single-family. So, Tennessee Town has a very unique history to it, and this is something that we'd like to convey in the plan. So, the earliest residents of Tennessee Town were newly freed slaves who migrated as a part of the exoduster movement. In fact, this is the only remaining exoduster neighborhood left in Topeka. And, it was also home of the first black kindergarten, or all-black kindergarten, west of the Mississippi River, founded by the infamous Reverend Charles Sheldon, who was also the first, the one who coined "What Would Jesus Do?", interesting fact. And, it also houses, it housed Topeka Council of Colored Women. So, neighborhood health is a planning tool that we use to measure an area's need for assistance in order to target resources. It measures five vital signs, including poverty, public safety, property values, single-family home ownership, and boarded houses. As you can see, Tennessee Town, as of the 2014, which is the most recent neighborhood health assessment, has been assessed at at-risk, which has been noted by the lighter shade Back in 2000, Tennessee Town was actually intensive care. So, since the last plan, it has moved up. Some other accomplishments of the 2001 plan include rehabilitation of several single-family housing units, new housing units provided by the city of Topeka, as well as Habitat for Humanity, King's Court, which is a basketball court and playground for children. There have been increases in youth programs provided by neighborhood churches. And, there's a neighborhood history area in the Buchanan Center that displays photographs Moving right along, here's a quick snapshot of the housing in Tennessee Town. So, as you can see, the majority of units in the area are single-family use. Following this is residential multifamily at 26%. In terms of conditions, 52% of homes have minor deficiencies, and 30% have been identified to have major deficiencies. These homes were mostly concentrated in the blocks north of Munson. So, this is a map showing areas in need. It is a composite of housing conditions, infrastructure conditions... It is a composite of housing conditions, infrastructure conditions, housing tenure, and crime rates. From this map, the Plan Review Committee selected the primary and the secondary target areas. As you can see, for the most part, the target areas make up the northern area of the neighborhood. We have the primary, which is the northeast corner of the neighborhood, and the secondary, which is at the west. The southern portion of the neighborhood was the area most improved by the 2001 plan.
I'm sorry, could you restate that one more time? What was the most improved?
So the southern portion of the neighborhood was the area that was kind of left out, or that was focused on during the 2001 plan. So just a few key issues that we're dealing with in Tennessee Town. In terms of housing, like I mentioned before, we have intermediate to major deterioration north of Munson Avenue. We also have a high number of vacant lots throughout the neighborhood. We identified 42 total vacant lots, and 35 of those were built full. In terms of infrastructure, we have road repairs needed throughout the entire neighborhood based on an assessment done by a third party. And with connectivity, there is sidewalk infill needed throughout the neighborhood. So this is just an example of potential street projects in Tennessee Town that the neighborhood will be prioritizing here at our upcoming final public meeting. So these were identified by that study that I mentioned in conjunction with a discussion with the Plan Review Committee. This basically illustrates how we determine final projects. So we put together all the information we have, we bring it to the committee, and we discuss it with them, and we bring it back to the neighborhood. These are the final steps, or the next steps that are coming up. A draft of the plan is currently available on our website. This will be available for public comments until October 2nd. Our final public meeting is scheduled for September 26th at the First Church of Nazarene, and our Planning Commission public hearing is tentatively scheduled for October 18th. So with that, does the commission have any questions?
As in the past, is there identified funding planned for, as a part of this overall area, once we have a plan and prioritize what makes the most sense? Is this one of the two that council will be dedicating some resources to?
Yeah, let me give you a little bit of background here. So Tennessee Town and Quinton Heights were selected as the 2017 SORT neighborhoods, which is Stages of Resource Targeting. It's a city program that dedicates 1.4 million of infrastructure funding per neighborhood and roughly 380,000 to maybe 500,000 of housing, federal housing dollars for rehab and infill, again, for each neighborhood. So this first year of this process is the planning, so Tim's talked to you a little bit about Tennessee Town tonight. Hopefully, we'll come back for final action on that plan next month. And then Quinton Heights is still in process. We're meeting with the committee currently, and we hope to, you know, get back to you with Quinton Heights, you know, later this year, early next year. So, yes, there is 1.4 million identified city CIP funding. We will also note that southwest Hantoon and southwest 12 Streets are arterial roads, which the SORT funding couldn't pay for anyway, but those projects are part of the countywide peasant sales tax, so those two streets will get done. So there's some other funding that will be coming the neighborhood's way also.
I actually had two just comments. Looking through this, I know this is a draft, but just in case this hadn't already been commented upon, there's a map on page 57 that, to me, the colors all look the same. It was really hard to distinguish what was going on with that map. And then I'm going to put on my day job hat for a second. Page 53 talks about historic preservation, and I just wanted to clarify, in the paragraph that talks about the Topeka Landmark Register, there's a sentence in there that is maybe a little untrue. It says voluntary designation does not carry all of the stringent legal requirements of being in the National Register of Historic Places, which actually, the local register has more restrictions than the national register. And then that's a little incongruous with the next paragraph that says, "We should list this on the National Register of Historic Places as a district." So I just thought maybe changing that sentence would clarify that a little bit. I totally agree with that premise. It definitely needs survey and inventory. I would love to know a little bit more about the neighborhood and what's still there. The shotgun houses especially are interesting to me, and to the State Historic Preservation Office as well. So otherwise, I thought it was a really great plan.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Great. Other questions? Staff, anything? All right.
Well, Tim touched on this a little bit, but we likely will be coming back to you for a public hearing on October 18th. So we'll have our final public meeting on September 16th, which is next week, and then we'll take all the comments that we've got and put that together in a final plan, put the priorities together, so the neighborhood will vote on the infrastructure priorities and the housing priorities, and we'll come back to you with a final draft, basically, in October for action. And I'm not sure it's clear why you're seeing this necessarily, and why there's a public hearing. I think Dan did a very good job, yeah, on the backstory, but I'm trying to the con-plan. Gotcha. So these neighborhood plans are comprehensive plan policy, so they are elements of our comprehensive plan. So anytime we update one or create a new one, like we were with Quinton Heights, it is actually a comprehensive plan amendment process. So the only time you really see these will be neighborhood plans. We did have a comprehensive plan amendment with the Reesers project, you may or may not remember. So we have kind of picked up the pace a little bit with our CPAs, but... So it's a regular old public hearing that you approve, and the city council ultimately approves as well. So it's... And then, once adopted, this plan becomes an element of our comprehensive plan. It's our policy document for that neighborhood. Including land use. Right, including land use and housing recommendations. And that's... Land use is a lot of times what we use when we review zoning, so our... We have our future land use map that's kind of a 30,000-foot view. These neighborhood plans are more specific land use, so there's more specific descriptions about what can and cannot happen in these neighborhood plans than there might be in our comprehensive plan, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
And moving on to our second discussion item, sign and building design code project.
Okay, I'll take that. The... You heard a little bit about this tonight, interestingly enough. So a few years ago, the staff had presented the planning commission with a sort of a process we wanted to go through to update our codes that have to do with visual impact. So we just call them visual code update. You saw, if you're here probably at the end of last year, beginning of this year, when we did, came through with our downtown rezoning, and we had a sign code for downtown and design standards for the buildings, and all that lumped into the D1 district. So that was a kind of the first couple steps that we wanted to take with updating our code for visual and aesthetic improvement. Our Land Use and Growth Management Plan focused on making this, making Topeka a place people want to live first. And to do that, to live here first, worry about the job second, to live here first, quality of place, aesthetics definitely matter in those decisions, as was just most recently underscored by GoToPekas Momentum 2022 Plan, which links how much, even just our attachment to the community is tied to the way it looks. And so this is very important stuff. It also drills all the way back down into economic development and having a higher standards, basically, for how we look. And that will return, that minor return, we will get back in the investment that we see in the community. So we want to take the next step, so we did downtown, and now we want to kind of approach it city-wide. It's a little bigger ball to hit, but we think we have some of the pieces in place to do that. So this is your intro, kind of getting your feet, just kind of letting you know where you're going to be involved in this for the next year, if you're here. Welcome. You can leave now. I won't begrudge you that. This is some heavy lifting, but we also feel like there's been some lifting that has been done. We have, definitely have policy support in moving this way. I'm on a committee, for instance, through the Momentum 2022, looking at quality of place and aesthetics, and how do we improve that in our community. So we're gonna... So from a code standpoint, what we can do is make sure our codes have standards. Tonight, we didn't talk too much about signs. They did a good job with this, with meeting our sign recommendations, but we did talk a lot about the building and the building design. And we feel like, as opposed to going, doing this sort of reactionary every time we have something in a transition area or a rezone, that we would actually, our code would have guidelines slash standards as to different types of buildings, different types of things, and Mr. Hall can speak more to this, and Mr. Warner can, but we've been kind of beta testing this in the last year or so. When we get commercial projects in, or multiple family projects in, we have three things that we look for. Openings, you heard, you know, we don't want blank walls, sort of thing, so we want some sort of address openings in your building. Materials, want variety of materials, and architectural elements is the third thing. So you want a variety or a mixture of those, so you don't have a monolithic-looking building as we were trying to get at tonight. We think we can do better. And so to that end, we want to... And then our sign code is years and years outdated. The downtown exercise that we went through, I thought was really good. They have a different, there's a different character downtown that you're not going to get citywide, so that's why we kind of separated it. But the sign code is the last elephant standing in the room in our code room. It's just the one thing we need to fix before we can kind of legitimize ourselves as being in the 21st century with our code. So that is, along with the building design standards, I think that is, that's what we want to advance to you and work with you in the next 12 months. So hopefully, we're back here a year from now, hopefully before that, actually. We mapped out with a proposal to update our code with a new sign code and building design standards. To get there, we're working behind the scenes right now on a few things. Probably the most important thing is a visual preference survey that we will be rolling out in the next, you know, month, couple months, by the end of the year. And what we want to do, we did this about 15 years ago, and we didn't have much, we didn't do it online, and we didn't have those sort of tools. We were actually literally going to meetings, and we would set up, you know, we'd have projectors and paper, and we'd, you know, pens. So we think we can do a little more efficient, reach the community and see what their tolerance is to good, mediocre, or poor design, depending on the eye of the beholder. And so there's a way to do this. Staff is working on, we'll do that with signs, we'll do it with buildings, we'll do it with just corridors and other typical environments that you might have around town, that we want to, we want to know really what rises to the top of people's list in terms of things we, they want to change or fix, or the things that we get right. The 15, 16 years ago, when we did this for the first time, the landscape code came out of it. We found out that, we didn't have a landscape requirement 16 years ago. And it was, you know, blasphemy at that time. But when we did the survey, it showed people, while they are a little numb to what's around them because they've been living here and they just kind of get used to it, there was a definite departure when it came to greening up sites and having them look much more natural, I guess, put it that way. So landscaping became a requirement from then. So I think out of this survey that we want to put forth, we hope to get some good direction on signs and buildings and sites as well. We are also, we'll have committees, we will have stakeholder committees. We worked in downtown with the sign industry, design professional, we also had a design professional committee, architects, and others who kind of joined in to help us with those, more of those particulars. And then lastly, we will probably also have a consultant to help us advise on, just from a legal and code standpoint, who's done this in other communities. And to the, to that end, we will probably kick this thing off in another couple months, having them present to you kind of the one, you know, how do you, the law and building design codes and sign codes 101, and just so you can begin to get a sense of, and then help us, give us some direction on how you want to take it. There's some definite paths you can go down that you can help us with, and we don't have to waste a lot of time messing with something if we can get better direction from that point, from you. So again, we're trying to educate, we'd like to try and educate you as much as we can as we go along, and it's, this is a big deal. And so that's pretty much what I wanted to expose you to tonight, and just let you know, probably by November, December, we'll try and have, it depends on our agenda load, we'll try and come back to you with that presentation, and then I think you can become more familiar yourself with the things we were going to deal with in a code update such as this. And before I leave, is there anything, Dan or Mike, you want to add to that? So, yes, so, we'll be rolling up our sleeves. I don't know if this will include any extra meetings, but we're going to try and all handle this here at the third Monday meeting. One thing I like is it's televised, and we, for those, we reach more people than if it wasn't televised, so we do like having it televised and getting that word out, and I think, but if we do need to have special meetings, we would certainly let you know if we get heavy agendas. I know we don't want to be here three hours, two hours into the meeting and then get another hour of sign code stuff, so that's, so that's what we're looking forward to. I know Mike is. I know Mike is. So any, any, any questions about the process or what we're, what we're about to embark on, or thoughts?
Exciting and challenging at the same time.
No, I'm not sure you didn't scare one of our members out.
We lost one already. It is exciting and challenging. But I think you'll find, you know, there's, there's projects that come before you, and you have a chance, like you did tonight, make some, some of those Solomon-type decisions, where, you know, where do you, where do you split things? This can, and you had just had to have an impact on how that, how that project looks. This is the same thing. This is probably even a bigger, longer-lasting impact. You see individual sites. This will affect every site that you don't see that comes before you. This is a long, long-reaching impact and long-lasting impact. So I, you should consider yourselves lucky. I don't know if you do. I'll assume you do, for now.
Good choice.
Is there, are there any other issues before we adjourn?
Yep.
Commissioners, anything? All right.